I am Executive Counselor Dave Wheeler. Merrimack is in my district and therefore I am chairing this meeting tonight. This is a special committee appointed by the governor and the executive council. Executive Counselor Russell Prescott is with us here tonight and we expect Counselor Kenny here shortly. He has the longest drive and in this weather he may be delayed a little bit, but he should be here. This hearing is concerned with the proposed improvements to Route 101A from Craftsman Lane to Continental Boulevard. And on Craftsman's Lane at the intersection with Boston Post Road is pursuant to RSA 230:14 and the Surface Transportation and Uniform Relocation Assistance Act of 1987. For the purpose of this hearing is to determine the necessity of the occasion of the layout and to hear evidence of the economic and social effects of such location and its impact on the environment and its consistency with the goals and objectives of such local planning has been undertaken by the towns. Following the hearing, this committee will evaluate all matters brought to our attention and make definitive decisions relative to this layout that you see over here. A representative from DOT will contact each property owner that is affected and discuss individual concerns. It is therefore important that all individuals desiring to make requests or suggestions about this project to do so tonight. I would remind you that you have 10 days from the date of this hearing to submit any other material you would like considered by this committee. At this time, I would ask Jennifer Rezak from the project manager for this project to present in a formal manner the layout which she has proposed. After that, we'll open the floor to those who would like to address the committee. I will request that all desiring to speak upon recognition by me step up to the microphone, state their name and address, and the recorder would like you to spell your name to make sure that we have it correct and make your statement. Please print your name and address on the sign-up sheet. This hearing is being recorded and a transcript will be available later. So Jennifer, take it away.
Thank you, Counselor Wheeler and members of the special committee. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Can you hear me? My name is Jennifer Rezak. I'm the project manager for the department and it's my pleasure to be here tonight on behalf of the department. As Counselor Wheeler mentioned, tonight's meeting is a public hearing to present the department's layout for the proposed project along New Hampshire 101A. I would first like to introduce the other people representing the department tonight. I've got Ron Crickard from the Bureau of Environment on the far side. I've got Steve Labonte to my direct left from our Bureau of Right-of-Way. Dave McNamara is at the boards. He works for our consulting firm, Stantec, who are our partners on this project in developing the engineering. Here with us tonight, we also have Peter Stamnis, the Director of Project Development at the back of the room, and Trent Zanes and Sam Feifield from the Bureau of Highway Design. We also have Tracy Tufts and Walter Wu, who are part of the Stantec team. New Hampshire 101A is an important east-west commuter route, providing access to the Turnpike and into Nashua. In an effort to improve this corridor, a master plan was created in 2002 that outlines recommended land use guidelines and transportation improvements between Milford and Nashua. On the transportation side, this study identified many deficiencies throughout the corridor. These included roadways and intersections without adequate capacity for today's traffic, intersection safety concerns, and poor pedestrian accommodations due to the lack of sidewalks or crosswalks. Of the many projects identified in this corridor plan, this was one of the midterm projects that was moved forward by the Nashua Regional Planning Commission and was first added to the state's 10-year transportation improvement plan in the 2015-2024 version. The project being presented tonight is one of many steps in improving the capacity in the corridor, with a future project also identified in the Nashua section of the roadway. The project that we are presenting proposes to widen the section of 101A between Boston Post Road and Continental Boulevard. It proposes improvements to the intersection of 101A and Continental Boulevard and also proposes to reconfigure the intersection of Craftsman Lane and Boston Post Road, which is currently used as a bypass for the lights on 101A. These plans were presented at a public informational meeting in July 2015, to the Town Council of Merrimack in June of 2018, and again at a public informational meeting in August of 2018. Based on some of the feedback that we received, we were able to make some modifications to these plans. Those changes that we were able to make have been included in the plans that are shown tonight. Once we have completed this presentation, I will turn the meeting back to Special Committee Chairman Wheeler to receive any comments or questions from those in attendance. I'll now ask Dave McNamara to explain the plans that you see and present the details of the proposed layout.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good evening, everyone. Let me just set it up. While we're getting the screen on here, start over at the plan. It might be easier to see here, just to orient everybody a little bit at what this is. You know, 101A is kind of running left and right across the plan here. This is going west to Amherst and Milford, and then east into Nashua. The Nashua line is actually right there. And then you see Continental Boulevard going up to the north. So the yellow you see is proposed pavement. In this case, a lot of it is matching existing, is going to be an overlay over existing. There is some widening and some modifications we'll get to as this goes on. The lighter green in here is off-roadway impacts, kind of landscaped areas and grass areas. There's kind of medium blue are stormwater management ponds. They're not, other than this one, they're not intended to be permanently wet. And again, we'll talk a little more detail about those as this goes on. Purple is a proposed sidewalk or relocated sidewalk in this case. The orange are driveways and minor side roads that are being impacted to tie back in. Red are the existing buildings, the broken green and blue lines are existing right-of-way lines. Thicker version of those are proposed right-of-way lines. These solid orange are proposed permanent easement lines. And then in here, you can see existing wetlands is kind of this faded blue hatch. So that's what we're looking at on the plan. I'll go through the pieces of the project a little bit. So the project area, the existing project area 101A, it consists of three westbound lanes, two eastbound lanes, and then some combination of raised and painted medians that develop the turn lanes at each of the three signalized intersections within the corridor. The section of 101A sees about 42,000 vehicles per day. There is sidewalk on the north side from Boston Post Road to the east, and then sidewalk on the south side, just east of Continental Boulevard. Despite the sidewalks, there are no existing pedestrian crossings within the project area across 101A. So we're looking at the project in three, basically three components. There's a New Hampshire 101A and the Continental Boulevard intersection improvements, which is really to develop capacity, sidewalk connectivity and pedestrian access improvements, and then finally the Boston Post Road-Craftsmen Lane intersection, which is a traffic calming safety component of the project. So I'll start with the 101A and Continental Boulevard intersection. The improvements here are a third eastbound lane and then a second right turn lane from Continental Boulevard and an exclusive right onto Continental Boulevard from 101A. But you can see them a little bit clearer here. The third lane coming through here, which ultimately ties into the three-lane eastbound section going into Nashua, east of our project. This is a second right turn lane from Continental onto westbound 101A. And then you can see this exclusive right turning onto Continental from westbound 101A. So the proposed benefits of Continental Boulevard, when you look at the traffic on these types of projects, we look at existing counts and we generally project them out about 20 years. So at Continental Boulevard, the average at the peak hour, which is the PM hour in this case, at Continental Boulevard, if no improvements are made, the delay is over three minutes. The average delay, whoops, the average delay for the intersection is 193 seconds. That's with the existing configuration that's out there today factored out into the future about 20 years. With the proposed improvements, we're looking at about a 61-second average delay across that whole intersection. So it's about a 70% reduction in delay within that intersection based on these improvements. It also incorporates the pedestrian phase. And another thing is we're looking at the signals. We can look at the clearance interval modifications. There has been some concerns raised about cars running red lights in this area, and that's one way to mitigate that type of problem. So the next component is the sidewalk connectivity between Continental and Boston Post Road. So as I said, there is a sidewalk on the north side, on the westbound side. We're proposing to add one on the south side of 101A, so basically adjacent to the easterly lanes over here. Add crosswalks at both Boston Post Road and Continental Boulevard and also improve the bike accommodations at the Continental Boulevard intersection. So this is just a section looking at the widening area here. You can see the existing left and two through lanes and then a little bit of a shoulder over here. We add this travel lane, basically slide the shoulder over and then add a sidewalk immediately adjacent to the roadway. And then at Continental, you can see the crosswalks on all four legs. These would extend across the right turn lanes in here as well. And then for bicyclists, with that development of this right turn lane, we keep the bicycle shoulder out so the bicycles cross the intersection with traffic like they should. So the final component of it is the Craftsman Lane traffic calming piece. This reconfigures the Boston Post Road and Craftsman Lane intersection. There is a concern with westbound traffic on 101A using Craftsman Lane as a cut-through to skip a part of 101A and get out of the traffic a little bit. This will help eliminate that or at least slow it down. It'll also reduce speeds on Craftsman Lane and kind of clean up this really flat Y intersection that exists today. And then the second piece of it, up in here, you can see there's actually a town right-of-way that bisects the church parking lot. So the church has, owns both sides of this parking lot, but there is public access across it. So that presents some safety concerns with the school, with church, and accessing both sides of the parking. So as part of the project, that would be discontinued. Craftsman Lane will be teed up on a Boston Post Road in here, and then this portion of Craftsman Lane would be abandoned. So we have met with the church about exactly how, what the final configuration here is going to be. They're looking at some internal options about their best way to internally circulate across this parking lot. So that's an ongoing discussion with them. That'll continue. Just a view of the Craftsman Lane that basically we just talked about. See it a little bit better up here. That's the cut-through. This is the teed-up Craftsman Lane on the Boston Post Road. Hall Road would remain. We tie into Hall Road right in here. And then the abandonment of Craftsman Lane in this section down here. So with any roadway project, stormwater management is a critical component. This section of Manchester or of Merrimack is regulated by municipal separate stormwater sewer system or MS4 regulations, which do require increased water quality treatment. So we need to treat 100% of the impervious area, 100% of the stormwater that falls on impervious area within the project limits. For this particular project, there is some existing treatment around the Continental Boulevard intersection, a couple hundred feet on either side, either approach to it. And that outlets down into the Pennechuck Brook, so we don't have to get into that area as that is already being treated by a system that was put in place about 15 years ago. So that's actually, if you look down in here, so this area and this area here is all treated through an underground system that's down near the limit of our project. So that leaves us basically with the westerly end of the project that we do need to treat. So everything you're looking at here in color are drainage areas. And so all this pavement today, anything that falls on it is untreated. This area here gets collected and it gets piped out and ultimately into stump pond in the back here. This area in here gets picked up and it's piped down and sheet flows through outlets on the side of 101A, kind of the west of our project, ultimately into this wet area at the bottom of the hill. And then this middle section centered kind of around the Home Depot intersection here, this is all piped into two parallel outlets that go between the Connection Inc. Drive and the Auto Parts Store over here. So what we're proposing is nine new best management practices or BMPs in order to treat basically that, the water on that impervious area. One of them, this one in here, we're proposing is essentially a traditional stormwater pond that you're probably used to seeing on the side of the road. It's going to contain water all the time. But the rest are fire retention ponds or swales, which are smaller. They'll dry, they don't retain water, and they will dry out after about two to three days after a storm event. So just on the fire retention systems a little bit, part of the reason we're using them is they do have higher treatment efficiencies than kind of the standard detention ponds. They utilize natural filtering media. They are shallow, dry systems, so they kind of work into the landscape a little bit better. They're generally low maintenance. There is a variety of plantings that you can use, kind of balancing aesthetics and maintenance, if you will. All of them will have overflow structures, so as the water rises in them at a certain height, it'll flow into an overflow structure and that'll just be piped out to the outlets. Some of them, depending on the geotechnical, some areas we have some ledge, some areas we have some higher groundwater, they'll be lined underneath so the water will go through the filter media and get cleaned, then it'll get picked up by underdrain and again piped out to the outlets. And then we do have some infiltration requirements through New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, so we do have to do some groundwater recharge where these systems will infiltrate directly into the groundwater. And it looks like from what we're looking at now, one of the ponds up near Craftsman Lane is probably where we'd be doing that in this case. So just a little more detail, up here is kind of a section along 101A in the widening area. This shows the cut into the slope and then the small bio-swell or bio-pond that's right in here and then blending back into the slope. So this is a little bit more detail on the fire retention pond. You see the grass media here, which is what we're currently proposing, so they can just be mowed on a normal mowing schedule. It's just grass. They sit on a couple inches of loam, and then the filter media is this lighter brown in here, which is a combination of compost, sand, and loam, basically. And then in the line systems, you have this kind of stone reservoir at the bottom and there'll be underdrained pipes running through it. So as the water filters through here, it gets cleaned and then the clean water collects in the stone, gets into the underdrained pipe, and then that's piped out of the system into the closed system and ultimately to the outlets. So in this case, we're essentially using all the same outlets that exist today, Craftsman Lane down to the west and then the outlets between the two parking lots. But just to touch on construction a little bit, we're looking at this as a two-season construction project. It's largely to minimize traffic impacts and maintain the flows that are out there. There is a good amount of utility work that we're anticipating between our drainage and some of the utilities that are out there that may need to be relocated. As I mentioned, we have done some preliminary geotechnical investigations. There's pockets of ledge. There are some areas where the groundwater is a little bit higher. We don't anticipate blasting. We anticipate it's mechanical means to remove that ledge, but there are, in either case, there are requirements on vibration and noise that the department has in their standard specs, and those can be modified and worked with individual butters if there are more stringent requirements that they need based on their use of the property. And drive and business access will be maintained throughout construction. Traffic control during construction, most of the work that's being proposed is to the outside portion of the roadways that's widening to the edges. So the intent, and we anticipate we can maintain the lane configurations in the middle. They may shift around a little bit, you know, using some of these median areas. We may take the lanes and shift them up or shift them down to create the work zones, but the intent is to keep the two lanes heading east and the three lanes heading west throughout construction for the outside of work, so, you know, the permanent condition. During working hours, when the contractor's on site with traffic control, there may be daily lane closures to install drainage or pave, but those can be handled on off-peak hours, you know, and kind of managed around the traffic. But then when they're gone, the intent would be to keep essentially your existing condition, you know, shift it around a little bit, but your existing condition in place. Utility coordination, there are a good amount of utilities out here. The verifications are ongoing with the various owners. We do know there's aerial and underground utilities, and they're both private and publicly owned within the project corridor. So any relocations that are required will be done in accordance with the DOT's utility accommodation manual. Right-of-way impacts, there is going to be a little more discussion on kind of the general process, but just to touch on some of the specifics here, we are anticipating seven narrow strip acquisitions generally around the Continental Boulevard intersection to accommodate the right turn lanes and the widening and pushing the sidewalks out, you know, with those lanes. We do not anticipate at this time any full property acquisitions, so which is minor or small, narrow strips. Permanent easements, as I said, are denoted on the plan in orange. These are generally for future maintenance and access by the DOT to maintain the new drainage systems, to maintain traffic signal mast arms and equipment, and retain a small retaining wall that's likely going to be necessary. Temporary easements generally aren't shown on these plans. They will be developed as the process goes on in coordination with DOT right-of-way as well. These are usually for construction access, driveway matches. If they've got to chase a driveway to kind of meet grade, they might have to go past the right-of-way a little bit, and these are put back to the existing condition at the end of construction. There's a contracted staging storage area shown as a temporary easement on currently vacant parcel down here as a potential for the DOT to negotiate and have available for contractors to use for staging. And with that, I'll turn it back to Jennifer for the rest.
All right. Thank you, Dave. During the public informational meeting, we heard several comments regarding blasting, and we understand that that's a concern in this area due to some of the past private development that's occurred. So as Dave mentioned, we are not anticipating blasting at this time, but if it does become necessary, the department has protocols in place to kind of monitor those operations and to prevent damage to any surrounding structures or the environment. Dave also touched on the large number of utilities in the area. Once those conflicts are identified, the department works with the utility companies to develop relocation plans, and then at that point, it becomes the responsibility of the utility to work with their clients to coordinate any sort of disruption of service that might be required during that relocation process. So as any part, or as part of any of our projects, the department must consider and document how our project impacts the environment. At this time, I'll ask Ron Crickard to provide a summary of the environmental aspects on the project.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good evening, members of the committee. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the National Environmental Policy Act, the department has evaluated alternatives to the proposed project and impacts the project will have on surrounding socio-economic, cultural, and natural resources. The department has coordinated with federal and state environmental agencies, including the Army Corps of Engineers, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, Environmental Protection Agency, and New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, just to name a few. In addition, input was sought from town officials as well as concerned citizens. After evaluation of information gathered, an environmental document was prepared, and I have a draft of that document available here tonight if anybody would like to review it. I will give you a very brief summary of just some of the environmental impacts that we have studied for this project. The proposed project is expected to improve the flow of traffic. Therefore, the completed project is not expected to noticeably increase noise levels or impact air quality at any adjacent residences. Temporary increases in noise and dust are anticipated during construction of the project, but these temporary increases are expected to return to normal following construction. The proposed project will require impacts to wetlands and surface waters under the jurisdiction of the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. The department will obtain the necessary wetlands and shoreline permits prior to construction. The department will continue to coordinate with the appropriate agencies to ensure that all wetland impacts are minimized and all permits are secured prior to construction. As mentioned earlier, to promote and protect water quality, the department has incorporated appropriate stormwater treatment measures into the design of the project. The contractor will also be required to prepare and implement a stormwater pollution prevention plan during construction. Finally, pursuant to Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act, the department, in coordination with the Federal Highway Administration and New Hampshire Division of Historical Resources, must take into account the impacts of the project on historic resources. The project area has been reviewed for the potential historic resources, which can include structures over 50 years old as well as archaeological sites. No such resources will be impacted by the project. That is all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Ron. As Dave also mentioned in his presentation, the proposed improvements will require acquisition of property rights in the form of easements and strip acquisitions. Again, no complete acquisitions are anticipated at this time. I'd like to ask Steve Labonte from the Bureau of Right-of-Way to describe the process of acquiring the necessary property rights.
Thank you, Jennifer. Members of the special committee, ladies and gentlemen, before I go into the right-of-way procedures for this project, there are a couple things I'd like to address. First, as Counselor Wheeler has said, if anyone wishes to submit any additional testimony as a result of this hearing or in regard to these plans, you can address the material to chairperson of the special committee and mail it to the address shown on the hearing handout map within 10 days of tonight's hearing, and it will become part of the official record. The hearing map I'm talking about looks something like, looks just like this, and the address is right here in the upper right-hand corner. It will receive the equal consideration of anything presented tonight. These maps are available from department staff or down on the table in the lobby downstairs. We also have with us tonight copies of a booklet entitled Public Projects in Your Property, which describes the right-of-way acquisition and relocation assistance procedures that are utilized by the state. That's this green book, again, that's down on the table in the lobby downstairs. This booklet is especially useful for those property owners affected by this proposed If after reviewing the information received at this hearing and during the 10-day period, the special committee finds necessity for the layout, several things will happen. The department will begin to negotiate with owners, will begin the negotiation procedure with owners of the property rights necessary for the project. Next, with approval to proceed with the design of this project, the department will be preparing appraisals for each of the properties affected by the proposed construction you see on the plans. A staff appraiser from the department or a fee appraiser hired from private industry will contact each affected owner to appraise their property. These appraisals will reflect the fair market value of the property rights needed for the new construction. Prior to starting the negotiations, appraisals are reviewed separately to see that all appraisals are accurate and have taken into account all applicable approaches to value. The value in the reviewed appraisal will be the offer of compensation used by the department as a basis for negotiations. An agent of the department will visit each property owner and discuss each acquisition separately. I urge owners at this time to ask questions and bring up specific factors they feel should be considered. If the property owner is satisfied with the offer, deeds are prepared and ownership is transferred to the state. If the owner is not satisfied with the offer of just compensation, the matter will be referred to the New Hampshire Board of Tax and Land Apers, where the owner will have the opportunity to make a case for additional compensation. It is important you understand that this can be done with or without an attorney. Either party can appeal the board's decision to the to the Superior Court if they are dissatisfied with the board's award. Anytime after this hearing or before the design approval, all information in support of this hearing is available at the department's headquarters in Concord for your inspection and copying. If needed, there is relocation assistance available, and a right-of-way agent will be assigned to the project as necessary. That's all I have. Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. As noted, following this hearing, a transcript will be prepared that will include all testimony that is heard tonight as well as any written statements that are received within the 10-day comment period, and this will be posted on the project website. We will also be posting the plans from this evening, so please check back on the website for links to other project documents as we continue and the project develops. If support is found for this proposal and the special committee finds in favor of the layout, then we will complete the environmental approvals that Ron spoke of and move forward with the final design. The final design includes development of the detailed contract plans, the acquisition of property as needed, the environmental permitting, and then putting the whole package together for contractors to bid on. In addition, the department has initiated discussions with the town of Merrimack to enter into a municipal agreement for this project. The agreement is required for the department to design and construct the improvements at the Craftsman Lane and Boston Post Road intersection since these are town-owned roads. It is also needed to outline the maintenance requirements for the new and reconstructed sidewalks along 101A. So we are hopeful that if all goes well, the contract will be ready to advertise in the fall of 2020, approximately two years from now. This will allow for constructions in the summer of 2021 and 2022. As Dave mentioned, we are planning on the two construction seasons to allow for the existing traffic configuration to be maintained throughout the construction process. The preliminary cost for construction right now stands at about 4.1 million. We're still early in the design, so there could be changes based on the conditions that we find as final design progresses. The funding is coming from 80% federal funds, 20% state funds in our form of turnpike toll credits. We do not anticipate that any town funds are required for this project. Counselor Wheeler, this concludes the department's formal presentation for the widening of New Hampshire 101A and improvements to the intersection of Craftsman Lane and Boston Post Road. I'd like to thank all of you this evening for attending. At this time, I respectfully ask the special commission, special committee to find in favor of the necessity for the layout of the project as presented here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. So this begins the public input portion of our public hearing. I have three speakers that are signed up, and if someone else decides they want to speak after these three, let me know or sign up on the table, or they can get a green card over here, I think, on the table. So with that, we'll call on Bill Boyd. If you could just remind her to state your name and spell your name for our transcriber,
Thank you, Mr. Counsel Wheeler. I throw you to the membership, to Counsel Kenny and Counsel Prescott. My name is Bill Boyd, B-O-Y-D. I live at 139 Jobber Road in Merrimack, and I'm a public official here in Merrimack. I serve on the town council. So I'm very happy that you folks are here tonight. I want to thank the DOT and the consultants for their presentation tonight. I don't necessarily disagree with what's being proposed. My objection is, not only is the objection just a concern twofold. Number one, the sidewalk on the southbound side of Route 101A, I really have a lot of concern for the simple fact that, A, the town's going to assume responsibility for this particular sidewalk, and it's difficult to assume responsibility for, in my, in my impression, strictly anecdotal, that you don't have pedestrian traffic to begin with over in that general vicinity. The employees of PC Connection, the people that use the church, generally, they go from the building to their car and they're, and they're leaving. The more logical place would be to utilize the sidewalks that are on the north side of 101A and strengthen the crosswalks at 101A and Boston Post Road and further strengthen the crosswalks at 101A and Continental Boulevard. Directing pedestrian traffic onto the northbound side, the north, the northerly side sidewalk on the, on the westbound side of 101A makes a lot more logical sense with the simple fact that you have neighborhoods on the north side of that road. You have neighborhoods that access this area by Natticook Road. You have people on Amherst from Boston Post Road that access 101A, and you have people on Severance Bridge Road. So to me, the, it would be logical to strengthen the sidewalk on the northbound side, if anything, to accommodate the, the myriad of neighborhoods that exist both in Merrimack and Amherst. Number two, the other concern that I have is, is the proposed layout for Craftsman Lane and Boston Post Road. If you're already going to be improving and trying to calm that particular area, it almost behooves that if, if, if the DOT really wants to install sidewalks, that makes more sense to put sidewalks there and connecting with Craftsman Lane so that people can walk down the road to Joey's Diner as opposed to having no sidewalks there and using the potential side, the sidewalks that exist in now and, I'm not going to say fend for your life, but, you know, it creates an interesting situation if you do have pedestrians in that area that are trying to negotiate that particular part of Boston Post Road and Craftsman Lane. Lastly, I would, I would also ask them to consider putting sidewalks along Continental Boulevard, on the westerly side of Continental Boulevard up to Natticook Road, to accommodate that particular neighborhood. But from where I sit, you know, if I'm, if I'm using a sidewalk and I'm at connection, there's no place for me to go westbound. You know, if I have to go to Frederick Space Three, if I have to go to Walmart, I'm getting in my car and I'm going there. I'm not walking there. But if I have to, if I have to go to Target, if I want to go over to Texas Roadhouse, I can easily access the sidewalk right there and walk right down there. To me, it's, I'd rather see a stronger commitment to a bike lane or improved, you know, bike passage along that particular section of 101A than the expansion of sidewalks on the southerly side of 101A.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions for Bill from the special committee members? We're good. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. And John from Hinckley Allen, please?
I'm good right now, but thank you very much.
You're good for now? Okay. And Bob Pratt?
Good evening. I'm Bob Pratt, Robert Pratt, P-R-A-T-T, and I represent the interests of Connection, PC Connection, and the owners. And if I could, just with a pointer, just for the sake of illustrating the areas that are affected by us, we own 730, 732, which is not illustrated here, which is the former theater that is at Post Road Plaza. And we also own a different party, but it's part of the, the organization, 736 Milford Road, which was the former New England Apple Pie. So as you can see, we own a pretty good chunk of the frontage that's affected by that project. And we'd like to say that, you know, overall, we don't necessarily have any objection to the project. We have an objection to the design of the project in the way that it's presented now. We have met with the, with the design team. We, we came to the, I, I was representing the interests of the owners at the August meeting, and we expressed our concern about a number of things. We are concerned about the slope configuration, which is on the south side of the highway, the impact that the extension of the third lane and the sidewalk will have at the top of that slope, and then the impact that the stormwater management system will have at the base of the slope. Right now, you're in most of those areas, I think the worst condition that you've got is probably about a three-to-one slope, might be getting into a two-to-one slope in some areas. But as we get into this design, as it's been presented to us to date in its current format, it looks like a good portion of that is now going to be a two-to-one slope or greater, depending upon how the design configuration of the stormwater management does, does play at the toe of that slope. We had some concerns also about the traffic count that's on the, on that segment of the, of the development, and whether or not the actual traffic count in the studies took into account not just the entire corridor improvement, but if they took into account just the impact in this area right here. Right now, what we see is we see a considerable amount of traffic, and it certainly warrants expansion in the, in the easterly bound lanes there. But we're concerned that without that traffic, in the immediate sense, having a place to go as it goes easterly before the rest of the corridor is fully developed, that we have the potential of creating stacking lanes that become a larger parking lot in that area. And our concern with that is emergency vehicles. And what we've had a chance to take a look at, and, and we discussed it amongst the design team also, is that, you know, to our knowledge, that Merrimack fire trucks have a signalization system on them that actually releases the green light and gets the traffic flowing. Nearly none of the other areas, any of the other, the towns, have any sort of a signalization technology incorporated within their emergency vehicles. We've had a number of cases currently where traffic has taken a turn through our parking lot, emergency vehicles to actually get beyond this section. And what we're doing now is we're creating that third lane and creating a stacking lane there. This, as the lights turn red, yes, it will stack up a number of more cars than what you have right now. It'll move that traffic west easily, quickly, until it gets to a point where there's no third lane, and that's just the short ways down into Nashville. So a concern that there's going to be some backup there, or certainly the potential for it, and we ask that that be taken, that, that a closer look be, be given to that. We also asked about some of the guide rail systems, because some of the earlier, earlier drawings didn't have guide rails. It was explained to us that as we're approaching the two-to-one slope, there's a requirement for guide rails. There's going to be the incorporation of guide rails along the southern side of the sidewalk. So that's great, but that's one more element now that creates a steeper slope as we develop that. That area right now is, is mown weekly. It's got an irrigation system in it, very nice to look at, very well groomed. That's not going to be the case. We won't have the ability to groom that with a steeper slope. We're not going to have the ability of making that appearance to be a natural appearance and making it to be a pleasant experience when we've got the stormwater management along the toe of that slope. We have talked with the design team. We met collectively at our office to take a look at possibility of some options. We expressed our concern about the placement of the stormwater management, the style of it, whether it could be relocated on the north side. Unfortunately, the most recent letter that we got from the, from the state was that this was not cost-effective, that this was not the most efficient approach. We feel as though that there's a, there's a distinction between cost efficiency and quality and design, and we feel as though that we're lacking a little bit on the quality of design, and we'd like that to continue. So bottom line, we're not satisfied with the response that we, that we received from the state, and, and we'd like that, that, that exploration to continue to a better system. We don't think that we have it there now. And we feel as though as the design develops, and as there's no longer the opportunity for, for public input, there could be some stumbling blocks when you go from a two-dimensional concept to a three-dimensional design and how that stormwater management is going to affect the slope in, in our parking lot. We're also concerned about the efficiency of the, of the stormwater management system, because everything looks great in October when the water is flowing freely, there's no problems whatsoever. We've illustrated to the, to the design team what happens in January and February, when that area has 15, 20 feet of snow built up there for parking lot removal. And you're into a stormwater retention area now that's frozen. It's blocked, and you can't get that flow there. You can't get the flow there to get it defiltered to go into the, the pond that's located just at the east side of our property. So there's some concerns there. We feel as though it has to be vetted out. We're far from satisfied yet. Our concerns have not been met. We're concerned about the construction easement that also takes place along with the, the construction easement, like along with the stormwater management. To give you a sense of that, that whole area that we're talking about designed, which is right along through here, our building is about 900 feet long, one end to the other. So just to give you a sense of dimension, looking at, at stormwater management that starts well to the east of that and goes nearly the full length of that building. We're not talking about a small area. We're probably talking about an impact on 10% of our parking just during the construction easement. Quite frankly, we don't have that, those parking, the additional parking available for that, to have a 10% reduction in that. So there has to be some consideration as far as the construction to be able to keep us operational. Jennifer mentioned our concern about, about ledge removal. We've gone through a considerable amount of, of pain when we had the Home Depot being developed, and that was a lot of open blasting. And the, the impact of the blast there were actually impacting our data center. We worked with main drilling and blasting when that was taking place, and they worked with us very helpful. They worked on redesign of their blast. So instead of a great big pow, you went to a pow, 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 you had a series of blasts. And they were able to, to get indications on the seismic system they put in. They, they put in seismographs throughout construction. They were both on our data center floor around the perimeter of the building and around the perimeter of the property so that they could, they could perform a blast, they could evaluate and determine what needed to be adjusted to get it to an operational, so that we could function properly with that. Now, we're moving to within the closest spot, let's say we're moving within 200 feet on the western end of our building to our data center, probably about 1,200 feet when you go to the, the easterly end of that. There are ledge outcroppings there now. When you take borings, you do the test borings, you're going to get indications along with the pattern of the boring, what the depth of ledge is at. That doesn't mean that that's the profile that you're going to encounter there. You can see ledge outcroppings are exposed forms of the ledge as you go along the edge of our parking lot now. They look like boulders. I assure you, they're part of the ledge profile there. We don't know what you're going to run into working along the edge of that because our recollection of the work along 101 was that you ended up with blasting at 101, and you went, you went to the all-over blast condition in which you get down to get all of the utilities and everything incorporated within, within the removal site. And there's a good chance that a number of that, that debris, the boulders, the refuge from that, the blast, was pushed on that slope. So where you may not get, maybe get solid ledge all the way down, that you will encounter ledge boulders or, or ledge outcroppings along that area. We can respect that there will be some of that that can be done either by mechanical removal or by trench blasting. Either one still has, still cause, creates a seismic event, if you will. In order to break the, the rock, you have to have some impact on it. Whether that's by blasting or by mechanical means, you'll still see the same impact. Otherwise, the rock wouldn't break. So we're very concerned about that. We also have primary and secondary telecommunications lines that come in that run right across this area right into here in the parking lot. Great care has to be taken to make sure that we stay in business. As we are at a few dollars short of $3 billion in revenue per year, all of that business from all of our sites across the country, through our distribution center in Wilmington, Ohio, all is processed through that data center. That goes down, we're out of business. So we're very concerned about, about protecting that, the manner in which it's taken care of. There's also a septic line that runs over from a, from a pit right about in this area here that runs up along, and there's some, there's some disagreement on where that line goes. We have one set of plans that we have which show a four-inch sewer pressure line that runs, let's say, say west to easterly and ties in down by Friendly's. That's going to have to be located and chased, because the state has a different location on that. And quite frankly, we're not in dispute about it. We just don't know. That precedes us, and we're very concerned about that. That again puts us out of business. So as you can see, collectively, we've got a lot of concerns on this. It hasn't been addressed to our satisfaction. I'd like to introduce John Sokul. John will be working with us and helping us to represent our legal needs, and, and I'd like to ask that any communication that we continue to have, that John has also copied on that, and we'll see that you have his address before the, before we leave tonight. Contractor Parking on, at 736, that's the first that I've heard about that tonight. The people that I represent also own that. Our plans for that building have not been Our plans for that building have not been unified as of yet. We really don't want to unified as of yet. We really don't want to be constricted on what we can use that for be constricted on what we can use that for because we have contractor parking in that because we have contractor parking in that area. So I think we've got to take a little area. So I think we've got to take a little bit closer look at that, have some more serious bit closer look at that, have some more serious discussions about that. So we will put our discussions about that. So we will put our thoughts together, and you will get formal thoughts together, and you will get formal communication from us within the next 10 communication from us within the next 10 days. But I need to leave here. If there's one days. But I need to leave here. If there's one thing I need you to understand is, we thing I need you to understand is, we are not satisfied with the design of this. We are not satisfied with the design of this. We feel as though there needs to be more feel as though there needs to be more effort, more collaboration, more cooperation on effort, more collaboration, more cooperation on this, and we need your help with that. this, and we need your help with that. We appreciate it. Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. John, would you like to give us your presentation? Thank you, Robert. John, would you like to give us your presentation?
I don't, excuse me, I don't have a presentation. I don't, excuse me, I don't have a presentation.
Okay. Okay.
I'm just here to represent PC Connection's interest. I did have one question about- I'm just here to represent PC Connection's interest. I did have one question about-
Name it. Give me your name and spelling, though, please. Name it. Give me your name and spelling, though, please.
Sure. John Sokul, S-O-K-U-L. Sure. John Sokul, S-O-K-U-L.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
At Hinckley Allen, H-I-N-C-K-L-E-Y-A-L-L-E-N.
Thank you, John.
I did have one question about the stormwater treatment. When you're treating the impervious, is it the entire impervious in the corridor, or is it just the new impervious that's being created by the project?
In this area with the MS-4, it is 100% of the impervious area that the project is touching.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, John. Sure, go ahead. Just say your name again for the record, so we know who's speaking when we do the transcript, please.
Bob Pratt, P-R-A-T-T. Jennifer, I'm curious about that. You said that it's the entire impervious area. But I noticed that on the north side of 101A, that you're utilizing, or at least incorporating the piping for the existing structures, at least it looks like that on the concept drawings, that those, that that water that goes, the stormwater that goes into those structures goes directly into a 42-inch line, which goes directly into the fire pond, irrigation pond, whichever you like to refer to it as, which is on the east side of it. And the reason I'm making that point is because the use of that existing system, there is no pre-treatment whatsoever there. If there's any treatment at all, it's restricted to the sumps within the catch basins, you're just picking up particulate matter. You're not picking up anything that has a potential for contamination, petroleum products, low-level VOCs, nitrates, you're not picking up anything within that system. So I'm curious, and I don't understand enough, and I know the MS-4 is new to all of us to some degree, but I don't understand how we can take one tact for the north side of the road, which is untouched, which you said that's going to be part of this, and then take a different tact for the south side, which requires not only the sumps for the initial treatment, but then pre-treatment within the bio swales. So I'm not quite getting that. I'm wondering if you can clarify that. And one thing that I didn't ask when I was up before, can you, Dave, can you show us what was changed on these drawings since the last time we met in August? You said that there had been some improvements on some modifications. I understand there may have been something on Craftsman Lane. I'm more interested in the 101A itself. Can you let us know what there was for a difference between what we saw in August and what we're seeing now?
Is this something the department can, chooses to explain right now?
I'm not sure that we're prepared to answer all of those questions, but to clarify again with the MS-4, the pervious areas that we're touching, we need to, or, I'm sorry, the impervious areas that we're touching, we need to treat. So if we're not touching it with construction, it's not within the treatment limits that are...
So for clarification, it's not the entire width, not the south width, of 101A, which you're addressing with, under the MS-4 guideline, MS-4 requirements, strictly the widening of the travel path, the sidewalk if you elect to do that, and any other disturbances that you've got with impervious materials along that area.
Generally, whatever's shown in yellow, so it would be the entire width of the roadway.
But the entire width of the roadway does not go into pre-treatment?
Okay, this is going to take a little more discussion and maps and a longer discussion, but I would encourage both parties to have that discussion.
Thank you.
After the hearing.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to give us their input on this project? Bill, you want to have a further comment?
Could I go, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Say your name again for the record, please.
Again, for the record, Bill Boyd, B-O-Y-D, 139 Joppa Road, Merrimack, Merrimack Town Councilor. Is it okay to ask Jennifer a question through you?
You can ask her a question, and if she has a simple answer, she'll answer. If not, we can have a further discussion.
Perfect. Who's going to be, under the MS-4 permit, who will be responsible for treating the water?
I'm not sure. I... In terms of the design...
Is it going to be the town of Merrimack that will be assuming the responsibility of treating that water, or will it be the state of New Hampshire?
The maintenance of those BMPs?
No, I know the BMPs will be your responsibility. I'm talking about the actual water treatment, like the filtration.
So that's done in the swales, I guess maybe that might be a better answer.
Okay. Second question, the town of Merrimack has a comprehensive blasting ordinance that was put into effect back in 2010 to accommodate the growth over Merrimack premium outlets. Does the state's blasting requirements supersede the town's blasting requirements, or do they complement each other?
I don't have the expertise on the blasting. We do have people within the department that deal with that on a regular basis, so we'll have to look into that answer.
We'll get you, we'll get you the answer, Bill.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to give their public input? Does the department have anything further?
We do not.
Okay, then we will close this hearing.